I'll call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order at 7:00. The prayer will be offered by Deputy City Clerk Judith Boilo. Alderman Tenza will lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have 12 present.
The sole item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on amended ordinance 1812, amending the fee schedule of the city building regulations. And to conduct the hearing, I will turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Budget Committee, but first I will invite the Deputy City Clerk to take her leave from us if she would like to. And ask the budget clerk to take over.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Do that, shut it off, and turn it back on?
No, not yet.
No? No, but the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Let the record show that Alderman Gidge has arrived at 7:02. Okay, the public hearings on the amended ordinance 018012, amending the fee schedule of the city building regulations. Would Director Marchand and whoever you'd like to bring up, come up so you can explain. Oh, Lytleman Lopez snuck in here, 7:03.
I made a graceful and dignified entrance.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Sarah Marchand, Community Development Director, and I'd like to introduce Bill McKinney, the Building Safety Manager. We are here before you with the update of the building fee ordinance. It hasn't been updated since 2007. We've had several discussions about this already, and we're happy to answer any questions you have, but it's pretty clear which fees are being proposed to be changed.
Okay. Are there any questions relative to the ordinance that you would like to ask Alderman Tenza?
I could just ask generally, how did you go about figuring the increases in costs? I mean, obviously, in 11 years, the administrative costs go up, but I'm not sure, did you use a guide, or is this based on the amount of time that the office puts into each application?
Most of our work is looking at through the...
Could you identify yourself first?
Sorry, sir. Bill McKinney, building official for the city. Most of our information was gained on studies through our administrative expenses for the department, time that it takes of intaking of permits, plan review, the permit issuance process, and our inspection process. We also looked back through several years of what our costs versus revenues for the department were, back to 2007, and we worked on our budget from there to come up to our increases of what our threshold was to be between 15% and 20% of an increase overall. Individually, you'll find that some of these fees were so drastically low that they needed to come up much higher than that.
All set, Alderman?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Director Marchand, was your budget revenue calculated on this passing, or does this have a slight increase in your budget revenue?
It would be, we would project, if we could, a slight increase to next year's revenue. It was not included in the revenue projections. I would say that the construction industry has its ups and downs regularly, and so it is a very hard thing to predict. We have been pretty steady recently, but, so these fees, we do think, will bring in more revenue as long as construction stays at the same pace, yes.
Not enough to change our budget for you, though.
I don't believe it's worth your time changing the budget, yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none. I'll call for testimony in favor of the amended 018012. Seeing none. Testimony in opposition. Seeing none. Again, testimony in favor, and just for the record, there are no members of the public here. None, and testimony in opposition, none. Okay. Your motion, Alderman Wiltshire.
To adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 7:06. Now you can go home. You want to pause that for a minute? I'd like to call the Budget Review Committee to order. It's Wednesday, May 30, 2018. It's 7:08 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman at large, Larry Wilshire.
Here.
Alderman at large, Brian McCarthy.
Present.
Alderman at large, Michael O'Brien is present. Alderwoman at large, Rashana Kelly.
Here.
Alderman at large, David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Jan Schmidt.
Here.
Also in attendance, Mr. Chairman, oh, and the Chairman of the Committee, Richard Dowd.
Present.
Present. Also, Mr. Chairman, in attendance is Alderman Gidge, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Cle, Alderman Karen, Alderman Jettie.
All right. First item is a public comment, and there are no members of the public. That would be none. Communication.
We have communications from John Jets, CEO, and Tina Andre, Director of Development, and their reasons home health and hospice care, fiscal year 19 budget appropriation.
Okay. Make a motion to accept, place on file, and waive the reading. No objections.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, seeing no objections, I would like to accept the communication and place it on file.
Okay. No objections. Place it on file. All right, next.
We have communications from Mayor Jim Donches. Reason is the fund number 2511. This is for a 201 Main Street Facility Rental Space and Revenue Fund.
If there are no objections, I'll suspend the rules, accept the communication, and place it on file. Okay. All right. And this evening, this is the first, and hopefully the only, wrap-up session for the fiscal 2019 budget. And we have a little bit of formality to take care of first, and then we will get into, if there's any questions, discussion, motions on the budget. So, the first item is, so far, suspend the rules to accept the change to the FY19 budget for the fund that we developed for 2511 to win Main Street Facility Rental Special Revenue Fund. That information will go in the pink pages of the budget.
Mr. Chairman, it's not really a suspension of the rules, it's just an amendment of the budget.
I'm just reading what somebody wrote. Okay, we're not suspending the rules, then.
Okay.
Okay, so, and that will appear in the pink pages of the budget? Yes, okay.
Mr. Chair, may I make an amendment?
An amendment to...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to add the proposed budget outlined in the memo accepted early this evening for Fund 2511, 201 Main Street Facility Rental Special Revenue Fund.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to add on page 260, all Salt Tower fees designated for Holman Stadium are $40,300, Mine Falls Park, $159,000, and the David W. Dean Skateboard Park, $32,700.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Alderman McCarthy.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I think we actually did this previously when we got the memo on it, but I, it's fine to vote on the motion again, but I just want to make sure that when the, when we do the edits to the budget, it's understood we're not changing that area twice.
Right. Yeah, so it's just, again, formalize it and add it to the budget. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Mr. Chairman, I think now, I think we're open for any future amendments by any Alderman?
We had, there was a request by the mayor to add $6,697 to the proposed FY budget to support Nashville's membership in the National League of Cities for the year beginning April 2019.
Okay.
City memberships are funded in Department 109, Community and Civic Activities, and other services on page 83 for the FY 2019 proposed budget.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, could you repeat that? Is that page 83? Thank you.
So...
If you compare it with the clerk for a second.
Soon can remember if we had passed that at a previous budget meeting.
I think that may have been in the same pass where we thought we amended the Holman Stadium accounts, but it wouldn't hurt to have a motion.
Prove it again. So, this would be added to the budget in the line item that I mentioned. Any discussion?
I think, I think this one's a new item, so it actually requires a...
Motion?
A crea, no, requires a creation of a sub-account that I'm sure the city finance director...
Would the chief financial officer like to come up and comment? Good evening, Mr. Griffin.
Good evening. John Griffin, CFO. So this particular item was added, as you indicated, on the 30th of April, and the account is going to be in the 55 series. I don't have the full five-digit account, but it will be in that category of other services on, in Department 109, page 83.
Okay. Any questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That'll be added to the budget. So, the changes that were made to the budget are added to the book that you have, but there's nothing significant there, so. Okay. So, now we are discussing the... Let me check the...
Future amendments, if not, you want me to make this motion?
Here, will we get there? Yeah. Yeah. Where's another motion? All right. So, what's on the table right now is the FY19 budget, as we just amended it. So, this would be the opportunity for discussion, motions, to add, subtract. Are there any motions on the FY 2019 budget? Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to amend the fiscal 19 budget by adding $224,000 to the school department to support the hiring of ELL teachers and paraeducators.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to increase the school department budget bottom line by 224,000?
Correct, yep.
To cover the covering...
I'm sorry? It's to cover two ELL teachers and the eight paraeducators that they need for the new kindergarten.
Okay. You can state that that's your motion.
That is my motion. I understand that we are not directive in line item.
It should be realized that if we add that to the school department's budget, they can spend it any way they want.
Sure. And I pulled this from the presentation that we had, if I could speak to it for a moment. I personally have a very close connection to the school department. I know what their needs are, and I know we can't give them everything, but I think these particular personnel will really help them, especially with the full-day kindergarten that's coming. And again, I realize that they don't have to take our directive in terms of where that money goes, but that was what was put in the presentation in terms of hiring two ELL teachers and eight para professionals.
Any discussion on the motion? I will say that I've always supported the school budget, and this year, until we find out what's going to happen with the reassessment of the city, it's very difficult to change the overall cost of the budget right now because that, we don't know where the tax rate's going to be based on the reevaluation. Also, while it's fair to the schools, it, there's other divisions that are, want things that they're not able to get, and it's really not fair for us to single any one out as opposed to the others under this difficult budget situation. Any other discussion? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the, what's been previously said. It's difficult when you propose an amendment to a budget to provide additional funding when that department hasn't identified that specific need. The reason I haven't proposed restoring the money that's being subtracted from the city welfare budget, nearly 50,000. I'm sure people who attended that meeting noted that I was pretty concerned about the reasoning behind it, but when push comes to shove, the city welfare office is saying that there's less utilization, therefore there's less requirement for funds in the first place. Now, my experience is having a closer connection to families in need and in homeless situations is, we do not have less homeless families. We do not have less need. From what I've seen with all the nonprofit organizations that I've been working with over the years, they've been expanding furiously to meet need. I know several of them, like the soup kitchen moved into a new building. There aren't empty chairs. It filled right up. The rescue mission has been working to try to find more shelter space for women. I see families getting split up all the time because there isn't enough family space, so mothers have to make the decision to go in one direction with their kids, while fathers have to go in another just to find shelter space. But what it comes down to is if the departments don't ask for it, it's very hard to make a motion as a legislator to provide them that support. That being said, when the issue arises, I think we should consider each issue as its own merit, not refrain from doing so because it could create a landslide. I think if we're doing our jobs as aldermen, then if there's need in the school district for additional funding, we should be looking at that need, not the concern that maybe DPW will ask for more money, and then the police. That could happen, but we have to take that as a case-by-case basis, and if anything, what I've seen with this budget and even last year's was, the departments aren't asking for more money. In many cases, they're, they have pre-cut their budgets without any effort on our part, which is easy for us, but at the same time, it doesn't mean we shouldn't consider the possibility that they may need more than they're representing.
Any other comments? Alderman McCarthy.
The fact that the requests are low is a reflection of the administration's attempt to keep the increase in the budget, and therefore the increases in taxes, particularly due to the revale, low. I'm sure that if you, if you asked every one of the divisions in a vacuum, they would tell you what more they could use. We can't afford all of it, and I would remind the committee and the board of the comments I made when the school department was here. This budget is up by $3.6 million over last year, and 5.3 million of that, of that $3.6 million increase went to the school department. We robbed $1.7 million from all the other needs of the city at the mayor's request in order to give it to the school department to give them an increase that is far larger than anybody else. And I would point out that every year, we do the same thing. We give the school department an increase that is far larger. And however, what have we seen when the Board of Ed has gotten together to discuss priorities? They debate for 45 minutes and then move to vacate the budget to the Board of Aldermen, essentially. We have no idea what the priorities of that board are because they can't reach a conclusion on them. So I'm not in, I'm not tempted to take more money and put it in that problem when I don't even know if the, the item that Alderwoman Kelly suggests is the next item on their priority list. They don't know if it's the next item on their priority list, so how can, how can we? And I don't know where the money will wind up if we give it to them. I would suggest that the prudent path at this point is to see what the effect is of the revale, and then, you know, recalculate what our priorities are across divisions when we can afford to make more changes. Yeah, I'd love to give the schools more ELL teachers. I would love to give them more paras. I know somebody who would tell me that they need more paras. But I also know that we need more fire dispatchers. We need new trucks. We need new cruisers. We need other things that we're putting on hold because of the current situation with, with the revaluation, and I just, I'm not prone to make massive changes to the budget until we understand what the long-term effect is going to be of that, of the revale.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So I appreciate everyone's comments, and I think it's, it's hard to look at this as someone who's going through this for the first time, and pick what things are more important than the other, and I don't think that's what we're saying. I think that my own experience, and, and actually, I have a constituent email that talks to this, is that a lot of people feel like I'm moving out of the district because of the schools, whatever, and I've heard that time and time again. So I actually did the math. This is 0.1% to the overall budget increase. We'd still be under the spending cap, and it's a 1% increase on their overall budget. So, I mean, the real math, $6 a per, $6 a household to make this happen for the school district.
That's true. However, until we know what the revale is going to do, it, it could drive the tax rate up over 3%, which is what the mayor's trying to avoid, and I'm sure the taxpayers also. I've been through the school budget extensively, and, and there are things they're doing without this year that they may just have to do without for another year. That's just the reality of, of the budget, and, so. Any other discussion, Alderman Wiltshire?
I appreciate the motion that was made. However, I too am concerned, you know, constituents saying, hey, what's going to happen to our taxes when you do this revale? And that's, that's scary to some people. So, I tend to agree that it's not the right time to make that big of an adjustment to the budget. So I, for that reason, I can't support that motion.
Any other discussion, Alderman Tenza?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I guess I have a point of order, a question for the committee because we've heard that we'll have a better sense of everything once this reevaluation goes through. But my understanding is that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we'll be able to spend any more money at that point or revisit the budget. And so at some, at some level, we're kind of going on our best estimate of what's going to happen going forward. Is that, is that correct, or am I wrong about that?
Alderman McCarthy, you want to address that?
You're, on the face of it, you're correct. We will set the budget for the year. If we were to find, you know, a million dollars under the couch cushions by some miracle, we can always make a supplemental appropriation to the budget later. Requires 10 votes to do, but we could do that in the case that we found that we were able to afford that, and there were needs that the board agreed on.
And if I may, but, so, so, in setting this budget, I mean, our concern is not, we're not going to find more money after the reevaluation comes in. The allocation of the money is going to be different, so we're concerned that the allocation of the money is going to be more tilted towards households, residential households, and away from businesses. So, to say that we'll have a better sense of things after reevaluation, and the budget's going to be set now, but the reevaluation is just going to determine how, what allocation of residential versus commercial, where the, where the budget's coming from.
Right.
Right.
As Alderman McCarthy stated, if we get an insight into the reevaluation and it's not as severe as we were anticipating, this board has the opportunity to do a supplemental budget with 10 votes to add things for FY19. So, and then... So, and then, Mr. Griffin, when does the tax rate get set?
Tax rate gets set in, um, November.
November, so it's supposed to be completed before October. So until we lock in the FY19 final budget, including any supplemental, then the tax rate would be set and that's the end.
If, I could just be reminded, when is the reevaluation supposed to be done by? The June 1st?
Alderman McCarthy?
I don't remember precisely when we get notice of it. Mr. Griffin may remember that.
Yeah, I could shed some light on that. Right now, the KRT appraisal is working through the sales, residential sales over the last year, commercial industrial sales over the last two years, developing an income expense model for the commercial industrial, going through some field testing to verify that things were, were correct in the city property cards. We will, um, in late June, we'd get some preliminary numbers, but not probably for public consumption. Heading towards July, August, tightening up those values, sharing them with the, uh, folks that need to know what the numbers are. And then they, uh, everyone's gonna have an opportunity, excuse me, to participate in what's called informal hearings where you get the opportunity as a, as a residential or business taxpayer to come in and visit with the folks that actually did the appra, the, the revale. All towards, uh, finalizing the numbers by October 1st, which is when the MS-1 is due to the state. Then they get a crack at looking at the numbers and then, um, one of the key pieces is the budget, obviously. That sets the numerator. And then the values set the denominator such that, I'm really being simplistic here, but that creates the tax rate. So if the tax rate right now is $25.79, based on the value that we currently see in the equalization, um, reports, et cetera, that tax rate will go down. Question is, is it going down to $23, $23.50, that type of thing? So, and we have had some growth in the, uh, in the city since the last MS-1. Right now, there's been about 53 million of growth, some of which will be pared off into the, uh, expanded Tiff district. So all that, all of those numbers go into the calculation and then you know, in order to have a, a productive informal hearing, the taxpayer is gonna be notified via letter of their new value. So it's really a, uh, July, August, September, uh, heavy work product culminating in that MS-1, um, submittal to the state on October 1st.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yeah, I guess I would, um, point out, it, it, it's, it's prudent of us to have the budget approved by the end of June because it takes effect at the beginning of July. We're actually required by law to pass it until a little bit into the next fiscal year. If the board chooses to wanna peek at the revale, what would make sense is to hold the budget at the full board until the second meeting in June when we've seen, um, at least the preliminary results and understand what the, what the numbers look like. So there is sort of an opportunity to do that. We can also pass it and then reconsider it. If we were to pass it at the first meeting in June, for example, we could reconsider it and amend it at the second meeting if we saw that things were different from what we thought.
Alderman Lopez?
With regards to the comments that I made, um, one of the things that lets me sleep at night about the reduction is that there is a contingency fund in the city welfare budget. So my position is if what I think is going to start happening starts happening, and I will say that I've already had calls and emails from residents saying that encampments are popping up next to their property. I don't know how that affects their value, but I feel like we have enough of a cushion to continue working with it. And if there are problems, then people who are experiencing those problems can take it to the mayor and say, I'm running into barriers, I'm having difficulties. But what we can't do is hire an ELL teacher in the middle of the school year quite as easily. So I think maybe taking a peek, as Alderman McCarthy suggested, would be a good idea because some of the budgetary items are cyclical where it's better to start recruiting and hiring and planning for it in the summer rather than waiting until October.
Other comments? Just as a data point, I just did a comparative market analysis on a house of about $300,000 from the last year. There were eight properties and seven of the eight sold in two or three days and were all over the asking price from 5,000 to 20,000. Home values are escalating in, in Nashua. The inventory is extremely low. So, uh, I'm, I'm certainly concerned about what the revale's gonna look like. Any other comments, questions? Alderman Jettie?
I'm not a member of this committee, is it? Can I still say something about?
Certainly.
About this? Thank you. So the, um, you know, as I understand it, the, uh, the, you know, this reevaluation, uh, you know, the property values are gonna go up and the tax rate is gonna go down. And the question is, but what's the end result gonna be for the individual homeowner, taxpayer? Are his taxes gonna go up or down? That, that's really what they're, what they're concerned about. And I, I think the mayor is, is concerned as he's explained to us that, um, for, for the various reasons that he, that we've already talked about and he's explained at length, uh, he's afraid that the residential taxpayer is gonna end up, uh, taking more of a burden of the, of the entire tax burden uh, as opposed to the commercial owners. And he's anticipating that if that happens, that the individual, residential property owner's taxes may go up. And he's trying to avoid, uh, they're going up too much. And I think we're, we're acting with that same fear. And I'm sensitive too, uh, as to how this is all gonna affect the, uh, the taxpayers. But it's, it's a difficult situation. We're all in the same quandary because, um, you know, especially those of us who are new on the board, uh, you know, ran with the promise to make Nashua a better place to live. And, um, and Nashua has some needs. And one of the major needs that Nashua has is, is its school system. As, as much as, um, as much as, as we feel that the school department, you know, has a, the largest part of the budget, comparatively speaking to other, other cities, their share of the budget is, uh, is, is not, is not onerous. It's not out of proportion with other, with other cities. In fact, it's probably a little, probably lower. Uh, when you compare Nashua to the rest of the state, what Nashua is paying per pupil is less than the state average. State average is, is over 15,000 per pupil, I, I, I think. And Nashua is spending, um, you know, a lot less than that. So it's not like we're spending too much money on the schools. And I would, um, you know, if, if, if it were possible, you know, I would be in favor of, of giving the schools what they ask for, which is, I mean, the, the mayor's budget is, is giving the schools about a million less than what they asked for. So they, you know, they have asked for more than what, what they're getting under the mayor's budget. And the only, the only reluctance I have to do that is, is I'm, I'm, you know, is this concern about how it's going to affect the, uh, the residential homeowner taxpayers in, in the city? And, um, so if, you know, I, if President McCarthy's suggestion that we, that we hold off on the budget or at least give us the opportunity to reconsider it after we get some more information, sounds like a very, to me, sounds like a, a, you know, an opportunity we ought to take advantage of. You know, if, I mean, I support, I understand what the mayor is trying to do and I support what the mayor is trying to do. But I also feel that, um, that what, what makes this city, uh, as attractive as it is, is our school system. And, and, um, I don't wanna see us shortchanging the school system because I think that's just going to have a domino effect. If our schools deteriorate, you know, then I, I think, um, our tax base is gonna deteriorate and it's gonna, it's gonna cause even, even more of a problem. So, um, I just wanted to express my, my concern. If I was on the committee, I would, um, I, I would, you know, be wanting to support Alderman Kelly's, um, motion. But I would, you know, I understand the, the reluctance of, uh, of doing that at this point without knowing more about how this reevaluation is gonna affect the taxpayer. But we're gonna have to find some way to, to come up with the money we need to provide the services that, that we need to keep this city a, a, a good place to live.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more that we need to give resource to the school department. But just to put it in perspective, right now, let's assume that the residential properties are about 60% of the total assessed valuation in the city, and I think that's about right. If that number changes to 63%, that additional 3% of the budget that is now shouldered by the residential taxpayers is 5% of the 60% they're paying. So they can expect a 5% tax increase if the shift is 3%. If the shift were as much as 6%, then they can expect a 10% increase plus the increase based on the fact that the budget itself has gone up. So we're looking at numbers that, that could be dramatic, and I'm not saying it will be. Saying until you see what those numbers are, the, the sticker shock could be considerable to some people. And I, I have seen other cases similar to the ones Alderman Dowd has seen where there are substantial increases in the values of certain properties, which will see, um, an even, an even larger share of the, of that tax burden put on them. So it's, yeah, we'd love to fund everything the school department needs, um, if they were to tell us what that was. But they, we really need to understand what's gonna happen to the incremental, um, tax burden on, on homeowners. You know, we can't make it a great place to live if you can't afford to live here anymore.
Excuse me, other discussion on the motion? One other thing is, um, since 2011, there's been a significant downshifting of costs from the state to the cities and towns. The New Hampshire Pension Fund is 50 years old this year, or last year. And when it was, or, when it was started, it paid 35% of the pensions for the, uh, members of the employees, the firemen, the policemen. In 2011, they cut it from 35 to 25. And between then and now, they've cut it to zero. Last year, it was a $2 million hit to the city. If we had that $2 million alone, we wouldn't be having this issue. But that downshifting of costs is gonna stop. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nays have it. Any other motions? Seeing none? Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to recommend final passage as amended on, and that is for the budget.
Okay, so passing this would move the budget from the Budget Committee to the full board. Uh, as was stated, we can get a look at, at what's happening with the revale before we do a final passage at the full board and you have the opportunities to bring up the motions again, or any other motions. So.
Yes.
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a question. So if we wanna table it as you suggested till, till after we get a peek at that, is it better to do it at the committee level or should we pass it and then do it at the full board?
Do it at the full board.
Okay. Thank you.
Otherwise, you're gonna be spending a whole bunch of nights here that you don't.
I don't wanna do that.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Griffin? The budget passed, at this level, anyway. Okay, um. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we do not have any unfinished business ordinances. We do have new business resolutions. May I read?
Yes.
Okay, we have before us R 18035 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $30,001 from Renaissance Downtown's LLC into Public Works' capital project activity, East Hollis Street Gateway Improvements Project. This was also signed to the Board of Public Works to appear on its 5/31/18 agenda. Mr. Chairman, uh,
Yeah. I think we wanna table at the left of the Public Works, uh, acts on it and then we can take it up at a subsequent budget meeting. No? Alderman McCarthy?
I would just send it back with a, for final approval and we'll, if Public Works doesn't approve it, we'll deal with it at the full board.
Okay.
This is, this is the money that Renaissance is giving us towards the improvement of the, of, of East Hollis Street.
Okay, so, all right. Yes.
All right, then, Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend my motion to recommend final passage.
All right, the motion on the floor for R 18035, from Alderman O'Brien is to recommend final passage to the full board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also before us is R 18036 relative to the transfer of $25,000 from Department 194 contingency account 70100, general contingency, to Department 109 Civic and Community Activities Accounting Classification 56, Outside Agencies, for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashua Association for the Elderly. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for final passage.
The motion is to recommend final passage to the full board of R 18036. Any discussion? Alderman Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, uh, the Nashua Senior Center Board is asking for the $25,000. As you know, this will be the fourth year that we've come to the city for this funding. This money is used to maintain and upgrade the facility, which actually belongs to the city. Uh, the first year, uh, they put aside $5,000 in an emergency fund, which they, uh, have done for the last four, three years, which really has helped. They were in the building for over 10 years when they finally got some money to upgrade the inside, which was they painted, they changed the lighting for, uh, safety reasons and also to make it, um, energy efficient. They were able to finally replace some windows to do some outside lighting for security reasons. And I know that September, when they got the work done, everyone was so pleased with the work and I know some of you have been there. This year, they're looking to tile the back hallway and the stairs. They've been having some fire drills, which has been recommended by the fire department. And of course, because there is not allowed to use the elevator, it's very difficult to get them down the stairs, some of them with walkers and what have you. So they're gonna change the stair coverings to make it a lot easier for them to maneuver around. In the last couple of years, they've been able to power wash professionally our commercial kitchen, which the Meals on Wheels people utilize, as well as all our bathrooms. So the money is used very selectively, but it's in keeping with trying to maintain that building because they take a lot of pride, pride in that facility. And again, this year, the anticipation- And again, this year, they anticipate putting $5,000 away for emergency purposes. So, we really appreciate your support. As you know, the Nashua Senior Center is probably the only center within the state that is solely funded agency, is not run by any town, it's not run by this city or town. So, thank you for your consideration on this.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, so, the motion on the floor is for final passage of, it's R. 18036. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also before the board is R. 18037, relative to the transfer of $150,000 from Department 159, other public safety account 54835 hydrant fees, to Department 198, interfund transfers, account 89725, transfer to City Retirement Trust Fund. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage.
Motion is to recommend final passage of R. 18037. Discussion? Alderman Kelly?
Yes, just a question. Can someone explain it? There's a lot of different, moving from this account to this account to this account.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yeah, I mean, what it's funding is, there's an account that appropriates money into a retirement trust fund, which is where we pay out the accumulated sick time, et cetera, and benefits when somebody retires. So, we can't appropriate directly into that, we appropriate it into Department 198, which then transfers it into another account. It's money that's coming from the hydrant fees, which apparently has some surplus in it. So, basically, we just found money in one place and we're going to, that we can use to spend on retirements instead.
Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Griffin?
John Griffin, CFO, just to add some more clarity, we generally, you folks generally appropriate $500,000 in that account each year. Some years, we have more retirements than others. This year, we had 21 retirements and paid out $637,000. So, what we wanted to do is move, and it's a non-lapsing account, it's an expendable trust fund, so whatever balance exists at the end of the year carries over to the following year. We had a few retirements recently, and we just thought that if we ask for 150, we're covered if someone else retires between now and June 30th. But it's money that goes, as Alderman McCarthy indicated, it's the final payment for accumulated sick and vacation and those types of things. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Lopez, do you still have a question?
Oh, I was actually going to ask if we had more retirements this year, or if there was an increase because of your comment earlier about downshifting, but I think CFO Griffin just answered that, so.
Okay. Anything else? Alderman Tenzel?
Can I just ask, is that for all city departments, or is that just for general government, and police and fire have their own surplus funds?
This is for all departments with the exception of the school department. They have their own fund that they budget for, but this is police, fire, general government, public health, those departments. And the reason is, you don't want to anticipate retirements in the operating budget with the ebb and flow of that, so this, we basically pay the individual one last check, and then this money goes in. You'll see it in retirement and separation pay as a line in each and every budget. If the individual resigns and leaves and doesn't retire, that's carried in the budget. And if, but if the individual retires, communication goes from payroll to my department, and then we transfer the money from the retirement fund, as Alderman McCarthy said, to the department's budget.
All set? Other questions? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business ordinances?
There is none.
General discussion? Okay, public comment? No members of the public here. Remarks by Alderman? No. Alderman Tenzel?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, as most of us are going through, or some of us are going through our first budget process, thank you for the work you've put into this committee, laying it out for us, taking time to explain things when we have questions that many of you folks have been over and over a number of times before, and taking the time, the mayor as well, in proposing the budget early so it's not rushed and we can start to understand the whole process. So, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Alderman Wiltshire?
Just to follow up on Alderman Tenzel's remarks, you know, even as an old hat around here, you still learn something new when you sit in on budget, and, yeah, you still learn.
A lot of numbers in this book, and a lot of different idiosyncrasies, but after a while, it becomes a little easier. One thing I wanted to mention is, in the last two days, the city of Nashua lost one of their really outstanding individuals, Mr. Steve Norris, who was the music director at Nashua High for a number of years. He started in Nashua High in 1955 and served till 19, I think it was 86. He was consummate gentleman, always, he did numerous things to help his students. How he kept up with his schedule, no one knows, but he will be sorely missed. There were a lot of people that attended the funeral today at the Greek church, and he was laid in a tournament this afternoon. Steve was a very great individual, and he's missed by many. Alderman McCarthy?
For the members of the board, if you haven't had a chance to go to Make-It Labs and see the sculptures in progress, it takes some time, the next couple of days to do that. They're really phenomenal, and they'll be, I think the closing and the dedication is this weekend, so we'll see them in various places around town, some in very prominent places around town.
Okay. Alderman Lopez?
Make-It Labs has a lot of sculptures around the city. I just also wanted to draw attention to the sword that they just replaced for Memorial Day, too, and thank them for doing that. I think Mordecai was the one who was behind it.
Okay. We have no reason for an, oh, Alderman Kelly?
I'm sorry, always last to raise my hand. Just a general announcement that the Soup Kitchen is actually going to kick off their new garden at the Citizens Bank tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., so want to come see what that's about. It's a good piece of land, and they're going to be doing some great stuff there.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because if I neglected to mention on the record that there'll be no budget meeting tomorrow night, Sue would have my head. So, there's no budget meeting tomorrow night. Okay, do we have a motion? Alderman Wiltshire?
Make-It Kitchen?
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and we're adjourned at 7:58.